Thank you, sir. That was a lot of room. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, um, just a reminder to everyone that, uh, please turn your cell phones to vibrate or to off so they're not ringing during our meeting. Um, public participation is five minutes. We just ask you to come up to the podium, state your, uh, town of residency and, uh, trustee Dabber will be the one with the time limit. Um, trustee Latimer, um, is not able to make it tonight, so he is not here. And, uh, our attorney Rory Brady is here. He's coming in in a couple of minutes from the other room, just so everyone knows. Um, can I get a motion to call the meeting to order at seven oh one P M?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Can I get an approval for the, uh, May twelfth regular meeting and the May twenty-sixth work session meeting? You know what? Let's do it separately. Can I get a, can I get an approval for the May twelfth regular meeting minutes?
I make that motion to May twelfth regular meeting. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five work session meeting minutes?
Will we approve the minutes?
Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving right along. Christine, what have we got? Correspondence?
Okay. Uh, the meeting minutes for the May twelfth regular meeting and of the village board and the May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five village board work session have been distributed. We received Bank of New York mail statements for the weeks of May twelfth, May nineteenth, May twenty-seventh, and June sixth, and a monthly statement for May. A letter regarding the proposed stipend for planning the zoning board members, as was discussed during the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six budget discussion, has been distributed. Um, the village tax bills were mailed on Monday, June second. The fire call history report for April two thousand twenty-five has been completed by the deputy clerk. An estimated quote for refurbishing the nineteen ninety-seven Spartan fire truck has been received for the board members to review and consider. Um, and Chief Anthony Capola has written a letter to the board requesting their consideration in appointing Norman Mann as the fire truck custodian. I will read that. Um, Village of Otisville Board of Trustees, please, please consider appointing Norman Mann to the position of fire truck custodian, garage attendant through civil service for the fire department. This will be beneficial with ensuring that our trucks are properly cared for and maintained. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Anthony Capola Senior Chief. And that is all I have.
Okay. Thanks, Christine.
Welcome.
Uh, Town of Mount Hope. Care what you got?
Um, our recreation department is busy scheduling activities. Tonight was the first book club meeting. If people are still welcome to join, they're gonna set a schedule based on general consensus of tonight. On June four, June fourteenth at eleven A M., there's a Father's Day craft for any Mount Hope residents. There's a teen night on June twentieth at six o'clock. On June twenty-first, we have a stop D U I presentation for teens going on also at the youth center. Um, on June twenty-first, we have the first A and C P R class from nine to two. And our first movie night will, is scheduled for June twenty-seventh. They all do have a sign up link on the Mount Hope Facebook page or the Recreation Facebook page. At our last board meeting, we did pass a resolution creating an ambulance district which would encompass the Town of Mount Hope and Village of Otisville. It's currently in the permissive referendum phase right now. Um, and then at our next meeting on July seventh, we will have a public hearing, um, changing, um, some of the zoning law to allow for rebuilding of structures in restricted zones. Cause right now, there's an issue if a house need, say there was a fire or a house needs to be torn down. There's some restrictions on it being able to be rebuilt on the same lot. So it would just allow for structures to be rebuilt on the existing lot. That's all we have.
Okay. Thanks, Karen.
Do that without notes.
I'm not there yet either, Bob. That's what sticky notes are for. That's why I use. Uh, fire chief's report. Uh, all I'm gonna add is, uh, Tony, uh, couldn't make it to the meeting tonight. Uh, I've been working with Tony in reference to some upcoming projects for the fire house. Uh, one, the, I posted some pictures online. The pole barn is done. Um, floor came out beautiful. Uh, I thanked Rob, uh, the person that obviously did the floor. Uh, I got a price from him. I believe the last one we got was about two years old, which I know trustee Latimer had got from him. I asked them to just update it so I can have it for the next work session or board meeting in reference to doing the fire department's, um, truck bay floor. Uh, I know it's in rough shape. I also know the apron to the front of the firehouse is also in rough shape, so working on getting pricing for that too, and hopefully we'll be bringing both of them, um, in the future here to discuss with the board and, uh, hopefully be able to fix it. Um, I believe the only thing we're waiting on for the pole barn right now is for Micro-Monter to come in and to hook up the garage door openers. Uh, once that happens, uh, you're gonna see some movement up there a little bit. And what I mean by that is we will be getting our nineteen twenty-six, um, Chevy Classic Fire Truck from the Town of Mount Hope that we purchased. Um, we posted some pictures online about that, cause I'm kinda excited about it myself. Um, so hopefully that happens either this week or the beginning of next week is when we're gonna be bringing it up. So, um, again, at least it will be here for the fire department's one hundredth anniversary next year. Uh, moving forward, trustee reports. I'm gonna start with you, Bob.
Um, let me just review some of the needs on this here. I'm still getting my head wrapped around.
You want me to come back to you? Can you do that?
No.
All right. Okay. It's all you.
Building projects, nothing going on. Uh, we haven't had any parks committee meetings right now.
None. So the window owner, if it's for you already up there.
Okay. We're gonna have a deal to Diane on the planning of zoning boards, and she was there this week.
Sorry, John. Sorry.
The Historical Society had their day on the farm yesterday. It went well. Nice turnout. Uh, the N P Os, uh, the Sams, the, that was a stand for, uh, something with artistic music and spirituality. Sanctuary. Sanctuary for art, music, and spirituality. On June thirteenth, they're having a duet with a group called Justice. And then they'll have their summer break in July. I want this, nothing going on up there. And the only thing really new with the old school community center, they're, uh, putting together a nice community garden with the help of that fair weather master gardener. That's coming along very nicely. And I don't have anything else today, Mr. Cooper.
No problem at all. That was, that was fun. Thank you. Lance, what do you got?
Not a lot. Um, the building inspector, you know, was, um, out of the country, so, um, he didn't get a chance to finish what he started, but like, he did go through a couple of sites that, um, I had sent over. One would be the wall, retaining wall behind one, um, main. He wanted to check out and, um, he's gonna write a report on that. So from there. He also checked on any other, other violation he had going right now, you know. He's only in one day a week, but he's doing a great job on that. For the park committee, we need the owner to finish up before, um, we really have our meeting. That's why I had them finish what they gotta do, so then everybody comes out and see that and go over there. There's not a lot going on there right now. We're still waiting for the, I think it was the southern. So we'll go there. So of course, between that and the owner, that will do part one of the veteran part we're looking at. Haven't had any complaints about the other two parks down the road. Finish well, so we'll go over there. I did finish up my mail log, but it's got an email, but I didn't know that finished up. I came and finished that for Christine, so.
Is Christine your profi finished? Is that why you're standing up? All good. All good.
No.
She was a witness.
She's, she's a witness.
We did witness that he did it. She didn't send me a letter yet.
I didn't know that it is. But I, I did put my issues down on the date, so anybody could read, get another date out of here. That conclusion I have, nothing really going right now. That's all I have questions. We've, um, our inspector get back for any other complaints.
All I wanna add is Javier had a death in his family.
Yes.
So he is out of the country. He should be back early this week, as in Tuesday or Wednesday. Um, not positive if he's coming in this week yet, until I talk to him when he gets back or see if things have changed. I'm not gonna bother him while he's out. Um, we all, we do have court, uh, Thursday for Mount Hope Town Court. I know he talked to our attorney, Robert Metta, for the cases that are going in front of the judge for Thursday, so everything there was put in order before he left. And, um, to be continued when he gets back, we'll find out a little more. I know there was some questions that Diane, you had asked that I had gotten him about. Um, I don't have answers for any of that, but he gets into his ball field, so.
Okay.
I'll, and I know someone else had a question that I had asked him, but I'm waiting for an answer back, so. You're not wait, you're waiting on me, but I'm really waiting on him, so that's all I wanna say.
Yeah, even the, the work they're doing, uh, with Kevin, it's ended so far. Nobody got back to him on that, so he didn't have much to do on that.
Okay.
That's what the plan up in, uh, Park Mark.
Yeah.
He, he talked to him, but it seems to just ended.
Yeah.
As we all see it ended.
I invited Kevin in with Javier, but unfortunately Javier went away, so the three of us can sit down and have that conversation, but that has not happened yet, just to add to it, um, to see what we can do, um, and what was told to each person, because unfortunately, um, rumors are rumors and, uh, facts are facts, and that's how I'm gonna say it, and unfortunately, there's some rumors spreading that, and that's, you know, they're just not factual, so. I said, let's just solve it with the three of us sitting down, so. That being said.
That's it?
Thank you, Lance. Diane, what do you got?
Once he's back, if you would, I was gonna send him an email, but if he's away, we're, um, okay. Just mention Seventeen Seawalk Avenue to him. I'm sure you saw it. In the past, the village has had to go in and, and mow that, but since then, it has been purchased, so, um, we really, he needs to be aware of the fact that we're not taking care of that anymore. That's all.
Hello? Well, if it was purchased and we know it was purchased, and there were, there's a certain amount of timeline for mowing it, then we're just gonna build a new owner. I, yeah, I mean, it looks horrible. Uh, we had another one on Highland. I won't mention the number, but it looks great now, cause they mowed it. But, um, if and when you see someone that has a high lawn, obviously there's an ordinance, uh, in the books, so report it to us and we will take care of it as best as we can. If not, they'll get fined and we'll go in and mow.
What, what has happened in the past is the building inspector would give them notice that they had end dates. If it wasn't done in the ten days, then our guys wouldn't have ended it.
And, and that's what he's doing now. He is gonna mow it first. So they don't have a time for the week mowing, cutting, and for the second one, which would be the.
Yeah, these people have been taking care of it. I don't know, all of a sudden, it's like, whatever. Okay. Z B A did not have a meeting, uh, this month. They had to cancel because they only had, well, they had two members who were unable to attend, which only left two, so they did not have a quorum. Um, but they have nothing on the agenda. I did meet with the planning board members, uh, informally before their regular meeting. We talked about training resources that are available online, if they wanna do independent study, um, what the annual requirements are, the new chairman's on board. Um, three members, it turns out, do not yet have hard copies of the zoning laws, so Christine's working on getting those made for them, but in the meantime, I did explain that it's available online and I sent them the link, um, so that they can, really, they'll find that more useful than having the book. The book is good when you're sitting there at a meeting, but if you're doing research and trying to find things, working off the electronic copy is easier because it's searchable, so. Um, and I guess that was it for them. Newsletter articles were submitted to Heidi, uh, along with some pictures from the plantings and the garden club, which I hope we can get in there, cause the black boxes look really nice.
We're gonna get them in there. I just had a problem opening them, and Heidi might not help about it, unless you said that her too.
Yeah, she's got everything. I just sent you copies.
I couldn't see the pictures, whatever.
Community Advisory Board. I did, uh, distribute the minutes from our last meeting in May to all of the board members, so if you have anything you wanna discuss, just let us know. Um, the inmates from the camp at the F C I are available to assist with the Lions Club for the setup for the fair, the way they have in the past. I wasn't sure with everything that's happened, if they would be able to, and they said no, absolutely. In fact, it sounded as if the request had already gone in. Um, they did, um, the camp administrator did approach me after the meeting and wanted to make sure that we understood that the camp inmates are available to assist with any municipal or not-for-profit things. And I specifically said, well, with municipals, suppose we needed help painting the firehouse? They said absolutely.
Okay.
The difference with having them do it and when we had assistance from the county is that these are camp inmates, so the way it's actually done is they're furloughed for the day. So the organization or municipality that is getting the assistance is responsible for transporting them to the site, feeding them if you're gonna have them all day, and supervising. They do not have any staff with them, but they're low-security inmates eligible for furlough, so this is not the only kind of furlough they could get. They could get a furlough for a weekend to go see their family, for example. But it certainly is something that could be a really good resource. The only thing is, because there's so many layers of permission, you really have to make the requests months in advance. They wanted to make sure we understood that.
You thinking what I'm thinking, John? I know what you're gonna tell us in your report, so we'll stay tuned.
Okay. Um, Mount Hope seniors, everything I wanted to mention. The Mount Hope seniors work very, very closely with Orange County Office for the Aging. They're a tremendous resource for the community and our very own village resident, Aaron Braun, was just promoted to the Assistant Director of Office for the Aging, so we wanted to congratulate her on that. It's well deserved. Thanks to the garden club, as I mentioned, our boxes on Main Street look great. Um, they are looking for assistance with watering throughout the summer. If it turns out to be a hot summer, it can be very taxing. Um, many of our members are older now. Most of us are older now, and, uh, so if anyone thinks that they would be willing to assist with watering the boxes, just get ahold of Christine. She'll refer you to the right person for, with the garden club. And it doesn't mean like all summer long. If you wanted to say, gee, the first week in June, I could do it a couple of days. That would be fine. That's a couple of days that one of the members does not have to be doing it. Most of the merchants are pretty good about watering the boxes in front of their, their buildings. Some of them are not, however, so we do have to check on all of them each, each week. Well, several times a week in the summer, but. Yard sale, um, so Christine and I talked today about, or yesterday, I guess, about the insurance certificate going over to Mount Hope, so that should all be taken care of and the county application can go in. Wanna thank Mary Beth, who offered to, she's always helped us the day of the sale, but she's willing to help on the planning committee this year. And I, before we leave tonight, I wanna talk to Lance about his availability, because we would like to schedule the first committee meeting sometime in the next couple of weeks, so we'll see what works for you. And that's all I have.
I just wanted to add one thing, since you talked about the yard sale stuff, so I can skip it on my list. Um, I'm working with Scotty Signs to do some three-by-five signs for our boards. One for the summer, or probably two for the summer concert series, and I want to do one for the yard sale. Put it up. Um, I just wanted to put the contact number, cause I don't wanna put anyone's personal phone numbers on there. So in order to get your house online or in order to get a spot down at Veterans Park, I was wanting them to call here and then the two clerks can distribute out the information so we're not putting people's personal information out. And what I mean by that is.
No, I know what you mean.
Right. Just, just in terms of, I don't have someone's personal number on, on the call.
Yeah, we do have it on the postcards.
I know that. I know that.
And, uh, and of course, no one, I mean, we didn't do that without the initiative, but.
I got you.
Yes, but I appreciate not putting on the sign.
I'm just thinking, like, I've had people write to me, matter of fact, not from Otisville, but I had someone write to me, kind of, that's interested in coming out, so I said, hold your horses, it's coming out. Trust me. I know August is gonna be here that quick and I understand that, but, um, I'm just thinking about doing some signs, cause I have, um, someone else that's looking to put their signs up. The, so the Historical Society sign should be coming down today. If they weren't down today, tomorrow, I forgot to look when I drove by, they have three of them up. Um, I know we have the Dragon Boat Festival coming up on the twenty-eighth. They're looking to put signs up, but again, we also have the summer concert series, which I know we did last year, and I just wanna make sure that we have priority over our own signs, is what I mean by that, cause of what happened last year. Um, that being said, um, I didn't do anything yet, but we'll talk a little more about it. Just since you're talking about it, I wanna throw it out there. All right, D P W, sorry, I skipped you on the list.
That's all right. Um, quite a few different things. Frank's order, working on the water report. Um, the village daily usage was, for May, was forty-four thousand five hundred sixty-seven. State prison daily usage was one hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred twenty-seven. Um, we installed a new hydrant on State Street, which was taken out by the bus. Um, we're working on the figures for all that, so they can submit that to the insurance company. Um, Frank, myself, and Brian are gonna be attending a water class this Thursday in the Town of Walchell. Also, on July first, me and Frank are taking the mandatory lab class that we have to take. Um, we're working on the back valve better problem at the firehouse. Um, we bought a rebuild kit for it. We rebuilt it. It's still not working right. Um, we're in the process of finding a new one to put in there.
What does a new valve cost approximately?
Approximately five thousand dollars.
How many times have we rebuilt the one that's in there?
This will be the second time.
Okay.
And it's been in there. I'm, Bob Swasey probably put it in there twenty years ago, so.
Okay. Um. When was the last time you rebuilt it?
Probably about six years ago now.
Okay.
Um, been doing some cold patching. I talked to you, you guys from O N R. He put us back two weeks, cause of all the rain. Just can't do anything.
No, I got it. I got it.
And, um.
It's gonna get done. I mean, for those, for walk, the walking path down there, the posts are in. You guys put the posts in, so that's kinda what's going on in that section.
Um, well, you're talking about the inmates. Uh, might be a good idea to try to get them. I don't know, can they be put on ladders and stuff like that, or the, the salt shed in our building here really needs, the salt shed needs to be stained and our building needs to be painted. At least the back side would really help and maybe something else, paint hydrants.
Okay.
If we had to.
Let's talk about it. We'll get it together.
Um, you know, also, just to let you know, uh, Chris McDonald had talked with me and Frank this morning. He's putting in two weeks' notice. He's the last part, time, full time, we just hired seven months ago. Um, it's not working out, so he's gonna move on, so we will be advertising and.
Let's, let's discuss that Wednesday when I'm in here. Let's get something on Indeed, since Indeed seems to be going.
Once I have his official letter.
That's fine. That's fine. Um, since he gave his notice and we know his end date, let's put something on there. I know there's some stipulations and things maybe that have changed that are kind of mandatory. Um, and I say mandatory as in certain things, criteria for that job. Uh, it's paying more now. Obviously, your union contract kicked in June first, so that's good. Um, let's see who we can get.
Yeah.
Um, anyone knows, anyone looking for a job? Feel free. Come apply. Okay?
Well, I got you.
All right. Uh, I have a quick question for you. Um, when do you think we're going to get, and I know you're down a guy, so you don't even have to explain it to me. Um, at least start our signs, our five entry signs. I know you have them in Indeed.
We were hoping.
I know, but I get it. I get it. Things change.
Maybe Friday. I think we're just gonna try to get, sorry, I'm on this for this Friday. We, we talked about doing at least, trying to do one a week.
Okay.
And we're gonna hopefully.
Long as you have a goal listed, okay.
Friday, but it all depends on how, the weather, the rain, and trying to.
Well, the ground will be soft. So that will be good. There is a positive in that story. Okay.
I don't know, John. What about Walker Street, that man?
That, we fixed that this morning.
Okay.
So.
How about the potholes going out towards Lake?
They're passing that tomorrow. They did start working on one uptown.
Awesome. Okay.
While we're asking questions, I asked Christine the other day, neither of us could remember. In front of Coconut's house, where that caution tape is up.
Okay.
Is that ours or something that we are?
On Port Street?
No, down, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, that's theirs. I don't know what, has something to do with us.
Yeah.
Has something that he.
Well, I'll have to ask the building inspector to check it out.
He did, he dug up his water service. Gotta replace his side, so I don't know if he just put that around it to keep it from.
I mean, it's been like a year.
Yeah. We're settling.
This is the house that's next to the garage?
Yes.
Okay, so just to tell you, that house has been abandoned for a month. The people were, to my understanding, kicked out. Um, they've been escorted out because there's some other issues going on in there, but, um, I don't really wanna talk about that publicly, so we'll talk about it, but remind me of that. I just found this out like two days ago, so.
And I did send Harvey there. He did go there. I did watch it.
To let you know, just to, cause you, um, just hit me. We're getting prices to pave Main Street. We have, it's gonna be a process. We're gonna have to, once we do decide we're gonna do it, we're gonna have to give all the business owners and do all that. Um, we got one price for a hundred and twelve thousand. That's going to mill it from where they left off in the bridge to the turnaround at the church. They'll do the whole thing, then come back and put binder and a top coat.
I have a question. Before we do that, what are you gonna do about the sidewalks in front of the one building?
Well, that's why we're gonna kind of mill it. They'll bring out the curb. That's, the sidewalk.
It's not.
We were gonna, we were gonna replace that years ago, when they did the rest of the sidewalks. But the personal people that had at the time said, no, they'll do what needs to be done there. We have to rip all that brick out. And if they want the brick cracked, that's gonna be.
Who wants it?
Technically.
Nine, the main.
The liquor store. I own the liquor store, I own it. We don't own the sidewalk.
I, I think we have to have a conversation with her about it, cause it's, it's horrible. I mean, I understand what happened. Water lays in there, I get it, but, uh, you know, every time I go into certain businesses over there, I have to hear, hey, when we get a new sidewalk, when we get a new sidewalk? If they're coming in to pave, um, I understand what you're saying, they're gonna mill it, but let's, when we get the person to come up and give us the second estimate for the firehouse apron, let's, I'll get a price from them to see what they said. Again, if Nine Main owns it, they're gonna have to do something, because clearly we're not gonna take village taxpayer money and pave something that's not ours, and I understand that, but we can work with her if she's going to work with us.
Because we, if we do mill it and do our part of it, and they don't do their part, it's gonna be another hazard and they're gonna put that on towards.
Well, if we mill it, it's gonna bring that, it down, so the water will still go down. Now, we're, but it's still, now it won't come off decidedly.
But we still need her to fix it, because that'll be tripping.
I don't, I don't, and we can have Javier get involved with this if there's water laying in front of pizza mania there as a shield. All I wanna say is this, um, the county, you and I had a conversation about the county, what they're supposed to be coming up and doing. They are in the process of getting bids to pay from the hardware store where they stopped for the bridge, all the way up and around the corner to Main Street. They're also gonna do, is Highland Avenue on the list to do?
I talked to the guy the last time. He says Highland, they're hoping to do these, Mount, Mount Hope and Highland Avenue this year, they're, or next year, but they're, I don't know if you paid anybody last year going down Mount Hope Road. They had that big machine, they're, they're gonna keep, continue from there right on up to the village, but he wasn't sure if they were gonna start here and work their way back.
Okay. All the millings that we're gonna take off of Main Street, what's the game plan for them?
We store them down and we use them for.
Okay, so let's, I have a question for you. Okay, so let's, I have a question for you, I would either like to put them, so we're not putting them somewhere, I'd either like to put them in behind the firehouse, cause that parking lot, I'm gonna say nicely, is a disaster. The way it's all, and I get it, there's not much you could do, you plow, you put rock in, it's like never ending, and or the ball fields, the parking lot over there, let's just put them somewhere. I know there's rock over there, I know, knock on wood, maybe years down the road, we might get grant money to pave, that would be ideal both sections, but that's not in the works right now, so let's utilize them somewhere.
And that's the other company that we're gonna talk to, that's doing for the county. We figure if we can talk to them, if they're gonna be here paving that, we might get a better deal on the same.
We just have to wait for them to bid the county project out first before we talk to them, so, okay. All right, that was enough conversation about Blacktop, all right. Rory, I know you're here now, um, I know we're gonna have an executive session, so do you care if we kind of do it under um, approving of the bills? Or do you care if we do closing comments first and then we go into executive session for it? All right, it's gonna go quick, my part's gonna go quick, this we talked about right here, okay. Under the mayor's report here, I just have a couple things, newsletters, uh, they were due today. If you have nothing turned in, no harm done, I'm gonna write something for you. Um, so you're gonna have your picture, and you're gonna have a little bit of information next to your name on the newsletter, just so people know who you are, how to contact you, what you're a liaison to, and. I'll fill it in from there, so I'm not really particularly upset if you didn't get something in. Uh, if you only wanna get something in for some of them, so be it, that's your choice, um, but again, I just want people to know who to contact for certain things. I got a call on Wednesday night when I was in here last week, and this is an interesting one, talking about paving at five fifty P M. Uh, and I believe from fifty-two Highland, which is in the vicinity of your house, Lance. The person called me about a pothole on Highland Avenue that was getting pretty deep. I kinda left here, I went up and took a picture, contacted the county, and this is why I wanna give them props for what they kinda did, or, or, or say what they kinda did. That pothole was filled in by Thursday morning, or Thursday by twelve P M. So less than twenty-four hours later after they were contacted, um, I just wanted to say thank you to them, I think it was great. I do believe in my own mind, we were already on a schedule to do it, it was pure coincidental, but that being said, it still happened and the potholes filled in. And the resident is extremely happy because I stopped and talked to him, and I said, I don't think I've ever seen fester service out of the county in my life, but that's a whole story, okay. Just wanted to thank the V F W and the American Legion on the twenty-sixth, they did a nice Memorial Day service, um, a lot of people, well attended. Think it's great that it happened, I think it's great that all the people showed up, so if you have never been to one, um, one will happen next year the same day, uh, so please come down to Veterans Park. Just wanted to thank all that were involved for the bus accident that happened on May twenty-eighth. Uh, for those that don't know, and for those that didn't see pictures, there was a, make sure I'm saying this right, um, a van with handicapped seniors in it that had run off the road, uh, right past the firehouse entrance. Uh, I know we got some county people up here also, but I know there was a lot of uh, people involved to transport all of those people, or most of those people out of the ambulance. Were, were, were all of them transported, were all of them transported?
Yes, all were transported.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Make sure I get my facts right, I don't wanna say, okay, so I just wanted to thank everyone for the involvement there. Talked about the poll board already, uh, just a couple things going on this week, tomorrow we have um, Congressman Ryan's car's van. Coming back to the village hall here, uh, they'll be obviously in this room tomorrow from two to four, uh, they were here. A little over a year ago, um, I think they had a pretty decent turnout for people that had questions, so I've been advertising, uh, anyone has a question. Congressman Ryan will not be here himself, just to tell people that, so if you wanted to come meet him, unfortunately, he will not be here, but representatives from his office will be here. And there is a flyer which should be up on that wall, yes, uh, to state what he's actually, uh, what kind of questions that he'll take and what he can do. Just going down the list, the Dragon Boat Festival, um, June twenty-eighth, uh, that's Saturday from eleven to six down at Veterans Memorial Park. Um, we will have a Asian Advisory Committee meeting between now and then. Working on the parking, we'll have more information by our, let me make sure I got the dates right, I will have more information for the rest of the board as far as everything. Uh, is in order and will be in order, obviously, for them to have it. Working with the Presbyterian Church right now, um, their parking lot, uh, they have a meeting next week, so I'm waiting on an answer from them. Uh, between now and our next board meeting, the Summer Concert Series will be starting, um, our next board meeting will be, what, the fourteenth? So they will actually have two uh, concerts that will start, um, like I said, there's a flyer out there, we're gonna have some uh, four by eight. Uh, information up, and I believe the town is going to put each band on their sign separately, so you can kind of drive by the dog park over there and see who is, but um. July first it starts, so it will be, uh, Tuesday nights from seven to nine, it's two hours long this year, uh, just like last year. So that being said, what else do I got here? D M V bus, I know a lot of people have asked when it's coming, uh, we still haven't officially got a flyer from the county, um, I've asked, but here and where they are, they're coming Friday the thirteenth. Put it online, they'll be here from ten A M. to three thirty, they take lunch from um, twelve to one.
So this Friday?
The third, yes, sorry, this Friday, yes. The Presbyterian Church is doing their annual chicken barbecue, um, I don't know that I've ever advertised this or if we have, but um, I saw it. They are looking for some people because they are a few people short of their goal. Uh, the annual chicken barbecue will be June twenty-first, you can reach out to the Presbyterian Church for tickets, they're fifteen bucks. I'll post something online about that, uh, Saturday the fourteenth, this Saturday coming up, um, Orange County Household Hazardous and Waste, um, Operation Safe Script Pharmaceutical Collection Event. Wow, that's a long list, uh, is happening at the, it looks like the Portervis High School, um, should have something up obviously over there too. This is for a drop-off site, it's from nine A M. to three P M., uh, right over Portervis. And I got one more, that I'm advertising because I was asked to. There's a car and bike show down at the Orange County Fire Training Center in New Hampton, um, this is to benefit the Orange County Law Enforcement Memorial Wall, they have this every year. It's a great event, it's packed, the only reason I know that is because I try to go every year, myself, um, that being said, I posted something online about it. The Greenville ambulance has reached out today and sent an email, so I wanna invite the board to this and announce it publicly if anyone would like to go. They are getting kind of, I guess this is excitement on their end, June fourteenth at uh, seven thirty P M. It's open for the public to go over to the Greenville ambulance, uh, main building. Um, I guess they're receiving their new ambulance, so if anyone would like to see it, since they do service our area, you're more than welcome to go over. Uh, that was open to the board and to the public, so I said that I would mention it. Last but not least. Firehouse parking issue. So, I had a complaint from a neighbor about the day of the bus accident. They tried to get their sick relative out of the house that sits in front of the firehouse. Um, I know there's been issues there for years, cause I've heard about them, again, I haven't been involved in the majority of them, only the ones of recent, so I just. Talked to D P W, I talked to uh, the fire chief. We have to do something with it, I have a picture which I don't, I didn't print too many out, and I'll explain it, I'll kind of, I'll pass this to you Bob first, but. Um, I'll explain it like this, the way the white line was painted up there, and I'm assuming it was painted up there years ago to keep tenants. Of that apartment building on their side of the line, so there's no confusion of whose side of the line where to park. The problem is, is when there's a fire call. The fire staff is parking their vehicles and blocking in vehicles that are for that apartment. Now, the day of the bus accident was in the afternoon, and this is the complaint, cause I said I'm gonna bring this up publicly. The complaint was that the person inside this apartment building, uh, in the back of the building could not get out because the vehicle was blocked in. So they had to take another vehicle. I'll, I'll, I'll explain it like this, here, Dan, if you show it to me, I'll explain it, I'll explain to Bob. So, this is the white line, there's a vehicle normally parked here, and there's a normal vehicle parked here. This vehicle is blocking, and on the day of the ambulance, I'm sorry, the day of the bus. They took the fire truck out of the first bay, and they backed our red vehicle, which is the medical vehicle, and they had it parked here. So he was not able to get.
Gotcha.
Out past.
So in front of the firehouse was what was blocked, so they couldn't get out.
In front of their parking space. In front of the social hall is what's blocked, not in front of the, yeah, right in front, well, that's still part of it, yes, so there was a car parked here, it's behind this one, this vehicle cannot get out past this. So, listen, I, 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 I understand emergency response, I don't want anyone not, not to be able to respond, I don't wanna slow any emergency response down, cause I take enough complaints, I really don't need that on my list. So, that being said, I kind of talked to John and Frank about what we can do up there, I know we have some lines painted near the entrance, um, I talked to Tony about this also, so. What's your suggestion on what we can do to paint more lines?
The only thing we can do is like, you talk about, from that white line, go over enough where they can get a car around. And put the white hash marks with no parking, it's.
All the way across.
All the way across.
Okay, okay.
Never, years ago, the people, the only person that parked in the back was there in one apartment in the back, now I guess, two different apartments are parked in there, that's causing the issue. Originally it was Kate, set up, we made that white line, dislaced the village property line to that lot, and then gave that person in back, just so they can just back out and. Go on their merry way, they'll be locked, and, but I guess, since they put more apartments in and did different things, they're living on their parking too, and that's what's causing the issue.
We had a tree fall on School Street after the bus accident. The response came again, vehicles parked in, in this manner, in the picture that I just showed you, they parked in this manner, coincidentally. Uh, the house that they went to on School Street happened to be the relative of the person that lives in this house. So once again, the complaint comes back, hey, um, I know people like to take pictures, I know people like to send complaints, but I have to, and we have to answer on two sides, one. It's our fire department, it's our personnel, it's our vehicles, it's our building, and we also have to take complaints from the public because they're taxpayers and they're the ones that votes in. So that being said, we gotta come up with a happy medium here, this is not a punishment, I understand, you wanna get in, you wanna get in a truck, you wanna get out, I understand that. The problem is, when you're blocking someone in, and again, we've had issues with this particular place before, they feel like they're being picked on, that's a problem. So that being said, let's add it to the list as soon as we can, paint the lines there, I'm gonna send a nice letter out to the fire company. That going forward, no one is parking there, if they're going to park there, they're coming in front of this board and they're gonna suffer disciplinary action.
Years ago, it's all was, for that section of the party, was for drivers only.
I get it.
Just the driver.
If we did not have enough parking at the firehouse, I completely understand why you wanna park there, but, and this is probably not the best example of cars, there's been four or five cars parked in front of the social hall. That being said, we're just gonna, that's.
Do we have to allow parking in front of the social hall, I mean, is that gonna really restrict them?
No, by him painting lines, what he's doing, by him painting lines, no one's gonna park there.
At all?
At all.
I thought you meant just a car length, you mean the entire thing in front of the social hall?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that makes sense.
Yes, and I would say this, if there's, and again, listen, if there's a rental, see, I gotta look at it from two points of view. If there's a rental and there's a handicap person that wants to use the front door, ah, as long as there, and again, I don't wanna give permission to some and not to others, so I think we have to look at that and address it. And or make some kind of parking for handicapped in the back close to the building, I know nothing's lined or nothing's lettered back there, um, honestly, I kind of love the idea that you can get all the way around the building if you need to. With vehicles parked there, you're kind of blocked, so listen, I, I, I'm trying to balance this, I'm not trying to pick on anyone, so they hear it publicly and they hear it radio. I'm not trying to pick on anyone, that's why I'm not calling out whose vehicles these are, it's just complaint, 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 so again, let's dissolve it.
We have no parking potential.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, okay, moving right along, since I've been talking way too long, okay. Uh, quarterly reviews, if you don't know what it is, what you need to do, please do it, I'm not gonna go into too much detail there, um, new business, since I kind of skipped it. Um, the refurbishment of the fire truck, you guys have a proposal. To my understanding, this was brought up in the past, it was a question of the cost.
Talking the twenty-sixth truck, right?
I'm talking the. This should be, hold on.
R one forty-four.
Thank you, yes, thank you. It was on the sheet, I just saw it, this is the nineteen ninety-seven Salisbury Spartan, um, truck number is R one forty-four. We, I guess in the past, again, not under me, but in the board before me, uh, and you guys obviously being included in, or somebody included in it, it was brought up about. Buying a new truck, refurbishing a truck, and the cost of a new truck, which we all know would probably make our head spin, um, and also taxpayers' head spin. So, the question came up of what do we do to preserve our current vehicles that we have? This was a proposal that was given to us a while back, this is the updated version of that proposal. To my understanding, there is not multiple companies that do refurbishment, um, so I'll let you talk on this, John, if you wanna say something, I know.
I'll, I'll give a little history on this truck. If we, this is one of the first trucks that the building, go to so, big cash war, back in nineteen ninety-seven, Ed McLevy was mayor.
Do you remember what the cost?
It was three hundred and eighty-two thousand at the time we purchased this truck. When this truck was purchased, this truck was purchased with the factory design, that what they're doing here is exactly what we had planned in doing twenty, twenty-five years later. Um, but at that time, it was supposed to be Salisbury, cause, but then, you know, like everything, things change, but looking this over, I talked to Tony. This is a very good price for what they're doing, you, yeah, this is excellent. And as you all know, I'm not, as much as I used to, but for to replace that truck, you're looking with excess of a million dollars, so.
Okay, all I wanna add is this, just so the public knows what we're talking about, cause I'm not into hiding numbers, the cost to refurbish this, this truck we're talking about is three hundred and twenty-six thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars, and since I can't read the cents, I'm gonna round up forty cents. It got cut off on my, so I'm just gonna round it up to forty cents, uh, it's a breakdown on the sheet of what exactly they would be doing. Uh, the one question that I wasn't answered is how long it could be out of service for, um, I believe Tony had a plan in place. So when that vehicle, if this is done, when that vehicle is not here, and it's. Wherever this is, up by Albany is where this bulldog place is, um, we would obviously be um, okay, more than okay, we would be using another vehicle to do this. Um, that being said, since I just mentioned the price, Christine, here's where you're gonna come in, um, what line were we looking for in our budget line that we have already saved money for this? So taxpayers don't flip out to think they're, they're already gonna pay three hundred and twenty-six thousand, so what, what do we have, and do you know the line amount?
It's the truck reserve.
Okay.
And there is enough money in there, you know, if this, um.
There's enough money there to cover the entire amount?
As long as, as long as there really is this amount, yes, yes, there is enough money in there. I mean, it would close to wipe it out.
Okay, this, this.
You know, putting more money in at the end, this year too, and start to build it back up, but there is enough money in there, yes.
This estimate was redone, if, it's very tiny print, thank God I got my glasses on, um, May twelfth, two thousand twenty-five, it's right under estimate only, and there's a couple things down, okay. Anyone have any questions, let's, let's open this up for questions, I hope I have the answer, but.
I, I mean, I understand cause I have seen that company up on the train, but we still have to have a price for what a known is to compare.
That'd be easy to get? No.
No, when you go out the van, you're looking, when we sat down to design trucks, you're looking, it takes a six-month process just in the designing phase. To get what you want, then these companies gotta put all this stuff together, and then.
Give you a price.
Give them a price.
And you're looking at two plus years.
This ain't just a plain game pumper that you build up, this truck is designed, this is truck built out stainless steel.
I understand that, but they still, you, they still can give you a price.
Uh, heavy, uh, heavy rescue.
You wanna hide from them to give you a price, wouldn't they?
They give you a blow price, but they gotta know what you want, they wanna know what you gotta do with the truck, how many gallons of water, how many feet.
I understand that, you take the same thing we have here and say, this is what I want.
If they have the old specs, which I would think are on file.
They should be in the hole, yeah.
We could probably send those and just ask.
I know we had a copy for us.
All right, I got a question for both of you, if they come back and tell us it's a million and five, what's that gonna do for you?
It give me an idea whether they're worth it or not, because now you're spending half a mil on an old ninety-seven truck.
Three hundred and twenty-six thousand, we're shy of a half a million dollars.
Plus the other three hundred thousand we bought it for, and the truck's still a ninety-seven.
It's a ninety-seven that's had plenty of use, has probably served this village above and beyond what it probably needed to do. John is not the best person to talk to because he loves this truck, so I understand his commitment to this, that's why he's never given it a look, but.
Pulled it in here, so.
I, 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 I get it, I'm just looking at this, there's no way we're gonna be able to figure out a budget for, even if someone said a new truck of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, we don't have it in the line. We, it would probably take us, how many years has it taken us to get that much money in the line, I'm just curious, approximately?
I don't, I can't remember how much was here when I became the clerk, but it wasn't nearly that much, so, so that's gonna be like eleven, twelve years.
When I left the chief, we were putting in fifty-two thousand dollars.
A year?
Yeah, a year.
Okay.
When I left the chief.
It was what, fifty-two thousand?
A year, but I don't know what they thought, they lost a chief vehicle since then.
Let me say this, if you guys wanna sit on this, and you have some questions, we can reach out to Tony, I have no problem putting this on the agenda for our, um. Our work, our, our work session.
And just another thing, Roger, if you're going to buy a new truck, minimum a few years out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I understand, I understand it, but still.
I get, listen, you have a question, that's fine, we'll get you an answer, we'll, let me say this, we'll call and we'll see if they can give us an approximate answer, yes, yes. I understand what John's trying to say too, like, listen, they're not gonna be like, oh, Otisville, how much money you have in your account, yeah, we can't tell you that, cause we don't, well, they wouldn't ask that anyway, but I'm just saying, like. We'll try and get you an approximate price, we'll talk to Tony and we'll see what we can do.
I could very easily see them coming back and saying like, it'd be at least a million dollars, okay, that's, that's an answer.
That's fine, no, we'll get you an answer, we'll just push, push this to the workshop, fair enough, okay?
I have a, a quick question, only because I don't know anything about refurbishing anything. Mechanically. It looks as if all of this, basically. Um, mechanically, it looks as if all of this, basically, we're rebuilding the truck.
Yes.
We're taking the, the structure and we're rebuilding it. So the only thing mechanical I see here is like one thousand two hundred dollars. So the rest of the mechanics of that truck, how good are they? Are we gonna then wind up spending another hundred or two hundred thousand on mechanical things?
Well, I know over the years, we always kept the upkeep on the motor and all that.
Still are, still are, we still are.
And, uh, that probably, I haven't looked at that truck. Probably a truck has less than fifty thousand miles on it, on the motor. So that motor's not, it's.
Okay. And that's.
To my, to my understanding, they stripped this thing down, they stripped all the paint off it, they stripped all the decal-ing off of it, they literally stripped this truck down and they lived, all the lights are stripped off it. Everything is built up to today's specs, not nineteen, not.
For me, just reading it, if they're carrying up, if they're taking off the air chambers, the air tank, they're gonna replace all that with new.
All the seals and everything else that are, yes. They're refurbishing it, okay.
And I talked to Tony, we did one day about it, just being able to bounce some things off of it. When they have it open, they're gonna have a look at the pump, make sure. And I, but they have the pump serviced every year and they pump, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions you guys got, please bring it to the work session and I'll see if Tony can stop it.
Thank you.
Christine, one thing that I see you forgot.
Really?
Yes. Um, our last board meeting, do you have our minutes from our last board meeting with you by any chance?
No, I don't, but I can get them.
Okay, no, no, I don't need them.
Okay.
Uh, we did not approve Anthony Coppola Junior for car two. Meeting's not over yet, I remember, so.
Good.
Um, how do you want to, so just to update everyone, um, Anthony Coppola Junior was appointed to car two. They had an election. They, they had an election, I guess, but we haven't had a meeting since, is how I'd explain it, so. Um, they had an election, they elected him, they gave us the results. They're asking us to accept the results for car two. We already accepted car one, Anthony Coppola Senior, and we already accepted car three, Norman Mann. So that being said, how do you want this done? You want it like roll call, you want a resolution?
Um, we don't usually do resolutions for those, it's usually, well, actually, it probably is. Usually you're doing it as a resolution, as part of the whole, the whole thing, so, yeah.
Do you, you're doing the reorg, basically?
Yeah, we're doing it as part of the reorg, which is a resolution, so, yeah.
Okay, so do you wanna give me some wording so I can throw it up in front of the board? Or how do you want me to?
Why do you say for Tony's, I mean, I would say just.
You wanna just table for a minute, I'll hold the resolution.
I just made a note and I thought of, okay. Uh, let's see. I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump down here, all right? How, can I get a motion to approve our bills? General, twenty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars, thirty-one cents. Water, four thousand, four hundred and ninety-six dollars, sixteen cents. Uh, fire, seven thousand, thirty-seven dollars, thirty-one cents, and capital, seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Do you need, will you favor bills?
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Okay, um, going up here to, um, motions and resolutions, I'm just gonna read these. A motion is needed to appoint Norman Mann to the position of Fire Department Truck Facilling with a salary of two hundred dollars per month effective immediately.
Before we make the motion, I just, one question. I, I absolutely think that needs to be, there's, needs somebody in that. And I, I do think Norman will be very conscientious about it. Is Tony aware of the fact that there's no money in that line item?
No, he's gonna have to move money in.
Right, so I just wanna make sure he realizes that.
No one's filled that spot since two thousand twenty-one, we did a little research. Um, one of the Vandermark sons, I'm not sure of his name, was the one that held the position last. Um, but as far as, let me say this, we're gonna, he already knows we're gonna move money from one spot to another to obviously have this done. I don't know that he knows that that line particularly didn't have anything in it, but, um, he's the one who presented us.
Yeah.
With the idea, I had Norman come in, I talked to him about it and, um, yeah, yeah. So at least we'll be on top of exactly what you guys just asked me twice, because, um, we're four years out right now. Okay, so that being said, can I get a motion to approve Norman Mann for the position of Fire Department Truck Facilling?
So.
Can you get a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, board resolution, or board resolution needed to approve the following. Uh, special district re levy onto fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, Village of Otisville property tax, UW zero zero one, uh, unpaid water, sixty-six thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty-two cents. You're gonna have to explain this a little bit after I read this. Uh, DM zero zero one, demo slash removal, two thousand seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, UT zero zero one, unpaid garbage, four thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. And zero T zero zero one, um, prorated slash omitted, five hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. So can you explain that a little bit, what that exactly is?
Yeah, the unpaid water is, that, that's all the water bills that were not collected throughout the fiscal year.
Okay.
The demo and removal is actually, uh, when we, I don't know why they quoted it as that, but it, it's, uh, we're, like, for instance, we, um, mow the grass at Seventeen Seavolt in different places, and then they don't pay their invoices for that. Unpaid garbage is the, um, commercial garbage that doesn't get paid. And then prorated omits are usually, if somebody has, if somebody loses an exemption halfway through the year, generally, it's like if a house is sold and they lost their exemption or, you know.
Yeah.
Maybe like a parent dies, you know, passes away or something, and they had an exemption, something like that. So it's lose, basically losing the exemption halfway through the year. Part of the way through the year, then it goes back on the taxes the following year.
Got it. So that being said, can I get a motion?
Get a motion?
Thank you.
By the mayor?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, if you wanna hop back on to the other.
I'll hold see.
Yeah. We did it by way of motion, um, so you need a motion. Yeah, I mean, that's what the ministry flagged out. Um, so a motion to, um, accept the election result. I don't know the date of that election, both.
It was the date of this meeting, I think, right? May twelfth, you had then a motion?
Yes.
I think it was the date of that.
It was, they had a meeting and, yeah.
May twelfth, okay, so it would be a motion to accept the election results of May twelfth for the following position, uh, for, and I'm sorry, I.
No, no, this, this was car two, Anthony.
Car two, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so that's what we need, and then a second.
Can I get a motion?
I make a motion as, no, on their results and those recommend Anthony Coppola Junior car two.
Second. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Cory.
Yeah.
You got it, Christine. Um, let's see, last one. Board resolution to implement, uh, the stipend for the planning board and ZVA members. Um, uh, be resolved that as of June twenty twenty-five, each planning board and zoning board member and alternate member, uh, not including the chairperson, uh, shall receive a twenty-dollar stipend per meeting payable in a lump sum, um, after the last meeting of each fiscal year, which obviously in our case would be May. Um, can I get a motion?
I make the movement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Just to let the general public know what that is, in case they have questions. We were trying to figure out a way to get people to join our planning board and ZVA. Uh, the town of Mount Hope introduced it a couple of years ago and it seems to work on their end, so we're willing to accept anything that might work on our end to get people to join. Uh, if you show up to a meeting, uh, and they have a meeting, there's a twenty-dollar stipend. And again, it's ten ninety-nine to that person, uh, in May, um, of that following year. So as of right now, if everyone attends a meeting, they would get obviously that money in May of two thousand twenty-six. Uh, that being said, I'm just gonna do, um, public participation here since I seem to miss that, and then we're gonna go and do an executive session. So if anyone has anything for public participation, I just ask that you come up to the podium, we'll give you five minutes to speak. Um, I ask that you address the board, not any of the audience members when you're doing so. Um, that being said, audience participation, come on up.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Masari, I'm a Village of Otisville resident here and also the president of the Otisville Fire Company. I did just want to address the parking complaint that came up. Um, it's not, I just wanted to be out there, that it's not, uh, we're being lazy or being disrespectful or we're trying to block anyone in. But personally, I have experience going to the firehouse at two o'clock in the morning and for my personal safety, I, I, I parked there, you know, um, for my safety. You know, I don't feel safe going on the other side of the building, having to walk up all the way around if I'm alone.
Is there a problem with any of the lights in the parking lot? Did you address?
I, I can't say I haven't looked, I just, personally, I just don't feel safe doing that. Um, so I don't think it's a matter of us being disrespectful or, um, you know, a lot of times when we're going to our calls, we are in a hurry. Um, our current medical vehicle is per curately parked in front of Rescue on four four. Sometimes when we need to get that truck out and not take the medical truck, whoever is coming is parking it there. Um, you know, we will speak to all the members about their parking. Um, I just, you know, a little disheartened to feel like we're being threatened if we park there, that we can place disciplinary action, especially since we're doing something for free for the community and risking our own personal safety. I don't think people take that into mind, um.
Who's taking into mind? As a matter of fact, who's taking into mind, and also you just addressed the truck issue, we're gonna move both trucks out of that bag since the ball barn is now open.
Yeah, things are gonna be moving around, so we just ask for people's patience during that time as well. We're doing some restructuring, we're doing some reorganizing, but the public needs to know that, like, we're not just being disrespectful. Like, it's a matter of essence, hurry, need, the door is there, it's easy, it's quick, get in, get out, and go what we have to do. And we have had a lot of very serious, major medical accidents happening for whatever reason. Not sure if it's due to the warm weather, but, um, we need to get there in a hurry and a little bit of a quicker hurry when somebody's life is on the line. So I just wanted to say that, um, because, you know, that for me personally, as a person, I worry for my safety too as well, and we have come across that, and it's just a reason why we started parking there. Um, but like, nobody's ever approached us personally and, and said like, hey, can you not park there, or I was blocked in or whatever. I was there the day of the accident with the bus and the only vehicle that was parked there was the one four, one four three, you know, um. I actually went to the scene of the accident, so I didn't even park there, but I just.
There was four vehicles parked there. I'll give you the video picture from the camera system.
That'll be great.
The person that's in that apartment, and I'm not gonna argue this, the person that's in the apartment, to my understanding, is terminally ill. They gotta get out for a doctor's appointment, and I fully understand that no one's picking on the fire department for response. We're just gonna move it over to the side door. If it's a question of lighting, we will light that parking lot up like the federal prison if we need to. If it's a question of safety, which you're bringing up, we're gonna address it. I'll have Micromono when he comes down to the ball barn, which it should be down there this week, look at the lighting on the building and we will address any issues in this.
Right, we just wanna feel safe, that's all, you know, like, we're, we're volunteering our time and our life to help older people maintain their life property and, and whatever else, you know, when we're going out at that time of night. We just wanna feel safe, that's all, you know? It's, it's not about like us being disrespectful to somebody, you know, in that situation, not, not at all. Um, so, yeah, if you have it, I would gladly take it back to the board and we will, we will definitely address it. I just, I felt like there's a little aggression there, so I just wanted to point that out, that like, we're not doing it to be disrespectful.
Never thought you were, ever.
For sure.
There was a complaint and, uh, it happened more than once and the bus accident was ultimately, uh, where the major complaint came from, 'cause they were blocked in. So when I went and looked at the video for the firehouse and saw the four vehicles that were parked there and it just seems like it's the same people parking there, that's the problem. You're literally parking on that white line where that second vehicle did not get out. So what are you doing? I have to follow it two different ways. I have to take the complaint from the person and I also have to obviously address public safety. No one's looking for response time to be reduced in any manner. No one's picking on any person in the fire department. If they were, I would've said, whose vehicle is this? And we would've addressed it that way. I talked to Tony, Tony's gonna bring it back. You're gonna get a letter from me personally that this was talked to, that's why I'm bringing it up publicly. So you can let people watch this video and understand, no one is picking on anyone. It just needs to be addressed and that's why we're gonna move some trucks into different positions, so there'll be other parking there. To my understanding, there's never been an issue of parking in front of the social hall. I say that from John, I say that from other people, am I correct about that? You were never allowed to park there at one point. I don't know where that's switched and I understand that certain people do and I understand when you're unloading and loading, that's not a thing, but when someone's blocked in and making you a complaint, we have to react and this is the reaction that you have, so, thank you.
As far as hall rentals, also, we don't allow anybody to park there. I personally put the cones down so that nobody parks there. So and they're, and they're aware of that.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa's mentioning the lighting. As I'm think, sitting, listening and thinking about it, having a few floodlights around the building that are on motion sensors probably wouldn't be a bad idea for a lot of reasons.
We have all the new lights on the ball barn. The lights on the side of the ball barn are not on because of the ice on the roof, but they will go off, I will make sure that.
Next week.
Okay, yep.
There's three lights on the side of the firehouse.
Yep.
There's the two, three lights underneath the bays.
Right.
And there's on the front of the building, there's lights.
But they have to be turned on and off, right?
They're on all.
Oh, they're on all the time?
Just a dawn.
Okay.
I can answer that a little bit.
That's even better than.
I can answer that.
They're on just a dawn.
Motion, okay.
Okay, when you go out to the water plant, and I'm not asking you to make this special trip, maybe you drive through there at night just to see if any lights are out. Just to see if any need, we have mine coming, so let's just fix it while we can, that's it. All right, anyone else, audience participation? Okay, that being said, uh, can I get a motion to go into executive session? It's, uh, eight oh six P.
I make my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't forget anything, Christine, did I? Forgot TPW, just a little bit.
The ones you, when you were reading off the things that were.
Reminder of the camera.
Oh, yes, and just as a reminder, anyone that stays here?
No way, no.
The camera stays on. I'll make whatever copies you want, that's one.
Yeah, it used to be the two.
I got it. You don't want, you don't have to come if you don't want to come, that's you.
I, I just, if you do need me, you have to be.
All right, go ahead, go ahead. Yes.
Call me if you need me.
I watched that morning, I signed up, they, they only get twenty-five P.
Any more say?
It's limited, so I will.
Maybe I'll just have Lois sign up.
Um, does he live, just take the information all the time? Is there an email address that you can be given?
Wednesday, did you tell me?
Wednesday, did you tell me?
Wednesday, yep, that's what he said. He's gonna send me the track.
I'll have a, I'll have.
I don't know why I was saying this to me like a huge box.
I will figure it out, right? Oh.
Oh, okay. I don't see the sign, but I believe you. I'm signed up too, but I don't know if I'm gonna, they might have more spots available. I'm not sure.
Yes.
I bet you might do spy.
Mine might.
Mine might be spy.
You gotta choose.
Oh.
Oh, you're in line. I got you.
Is there a line probably?
Oh, I, I'm good. I can hold.
Are you all on?
There's somebody in there. And I'm next.
There is a line then.
There is a line.
Whoever's in there should go knock to shut the door.
Oh, somebody didn't shut the door?
No, it's just, it's.
Oh, it's standing over there.
It stick a little. It does stick a little.
I know, I've done it before too. Can I ask you the ornament?
So this out in Arizona, he's a contact.
I got your flag stand.
Yeah, we, we, we're not the flag stand.
That's nice area, yeah.
We had to stay in that corner.
It's nice.
Oh, like what? This later?
Well, place should go north of you where, got a little bit of mountain. Yeah, yeah.
We were going into here again, you know, we had help, we decided to cross the road, so we had to wait.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it was now.
Yeah, I was out there a couple times.
Oh, there's a lot of stone in there right now.
Yeah, oh, a whole lot of stone.
Yeah.
Guess what? Why's she in here? All that rain.
It'll settle down, it'll keep. Yep.
My father's been dead thirty seven years.
Way, way, the guy, you're engineer.
And it's everywhere though, too.
Need to.
It's not, it's not, yeah. Yeah.
It shouldn't step in one of the other directions. Get it away from our watershed. No, exactly. We're sending it down under the, behind you.
Yeah, they should've done this. Two houses over from me, they should've, like you said, had it go the other way.
Yep.
Because at my house, at my, in my driveway, right there by.
You need a water pump bathroom.
The water was holding out.
Right, yeah.
And it was drawing from.
It must be the rainy weather has got everybody.
If it got too low, it wouldn't go through the pipes, but it would seep down.
Now, there's a literal, I, all my years in there, my, all that stuff. I know with you guys, you've been doing a lot of clearance, a little bit more backseat, back, but there's a little pond back there. Never was there before.
I explained it to the bill inspector. John Hollywood, when I bought that house, when John Hollywood got his hit with police, I always looked at that form, and I've been wrong. Didn't have water. There's a pipe. It used to be a clock, and it goes down, I don't know, down towards the water shed someplace.
Right.
That happens in here a lot. They're like, they're like, they're gonna say something like, what's that?
And now.
And my mouth is so dry, I can't keep my heart, you know?
Yeah.
Don't even go in hole no more.
I didn't wanna get up first. Where are you going?
Well, you're gonna.
I usually always try to go forward, but if there was something.
Her face is great.
Never got permission from.
I don't know. She just twinged for a minute. She was, oh, we're gonna need more. Cause he's like.
He's like, one? I'm like, no, three.
I just said, I'm just like.
Got it.
D C.
Never did nothing down, never called. And you know, you know, you do store, cause I know for work, I do store during.
I forgot what it was.
And they'll tell you what you can and can't do. So now, so now that hole, that hole's gonna go in. And now it's gonna happen to grass. You go across the park. I'd say, but if the village doesn't.
Okay.
Good seeing you.
Cause I know him. Or, you know. Right, yeah.
That's obviously residential.
Yeah. Did you handle every good thing, John?
Mm-hmm, yeah. It was easier. Anybody else put anything in? The other guy, the other one I gave it to. He's gonna look at it, but I don't.
I think it's too far.
Yeah.
So this week, well, last week, finished off actually, I had to work with Tony, because I have to put the fire department on that trailer.
I hope so.
And then, or Brandon, so, yeah. Tony said he would do it. I thought we could do it as municipality, but we can't. Sheriff brought back another nine, said, walk him. Said we can use. And today, how you talk to Andrew or Brandon, I forgot what she said. We don't only have that many trailers. They said we only have like the little like armchair trailers with the two tires.
There's gotta be some place where we get a couple trailers.
Well, Bobby has some, my, so Brian, like, if you got him as one for the village, he could, he would lend one of his.
Yeah.
He has his own.
Right.
So I don't know if you're, if they're gonna, the village is gonna do that, or maybe I would see if Bobby has another one, or.
Dean, what are you guys gonna do with yours?
See what, I don't know. We're gonna try to get the employees to do something. Like, I can't. I can't. We can't take on that. It's like, maybe we don't have time, and we're capacity to do that, so. But I thought Dean might have something of his business, maybe, that Bobby.
He has, Dean has, um, his trailer enclosed, so that one.
But Bobby has an opener, but, but I think Amanda said that Rick might have something. I don't mean, I think she said maybe she could get something from somebody.
If anybody had any hay wax, they'd have shoes, but Bobby guys are using them.
Especially in September.
Yeah.
But, um, we'll figure, I mean, I don't, we'll figure something out. I mean, like, Kathleen said today, when I was top Hollywood. We had a right one. Bobby didn't even think about it, to be honest. Yeah, I just don't, I don't, we don't really, like, as an employee, that's, we don't. We've got that many employees, but people are trying to stretch the limits. That's how you, how you, the ones who're talking to them.
Boy, have fun at the dance.
Yes, he had a blast. I think they all did.
William didn't want to go, but I think now that he. No, he didn't wanna go. He don't go.
He could've modified somehow.
Like, that kind of stuff.
Like, they all, and they all liked, which was usually unusual. They all be like, have.
Think now he's talking to the friends, guys. I told him, don't worry about it. I said, Jermaine, senior prom, you know, senior prom, they're the ones you got.
Can't be everywhere. You know, it's like, it's only somebody.
Four more years.
It'll go by.
Do you have a matter of school? I seen your other son with one day going to Dollar General.
Yeah.
What the hell is your brother?
Yeah.
Just looking at our kids.
I know. I'm gonna like grade kids and see how fast they're growing. I'm like.
Kill me.
And then, when you're looking at babies, they're fifty.
I would do cheerleading, do, do football.
Off a plate, you know what I mean?
I can't believe we've been here twenty-six years. I really can't. Doesn't seem like we've been here twenty-six years. Been last week, right?
I think it's, I mean, years, it's over thirty. Frank just started his fortyth year.
Really?
Was Christian, how old is Christian?
When, when we first moved here, Christian was in the second grade. And he was ma, he was mad at school too, because we moved up from Jersey. He had four days left to school. In Jersey, we moved up here, he had three weeks.
Oh, yeah. It's like, yeah, a lot of my friends that have kids, they get out, they're out already, they get out in May.
Yeah.
But they also.
Had their last day of school, I think it was like yesterday or something.
Yeah, but they also go back to school early, early in August, you know?
Well, it, like.
Well, that's one of the kind of.
Grandkids, cause they're out in Jersey, they go back the first week of August. Come, uh, May, they're.
You know, stuff like that. But that's, that's not gonna be the huge thing, when we're all, once it's up there to spread out.
Yeah.
So they're moving the time capsule on Sunday, but then they're like, oh, it's the day, and it's the next day.
Right.
So, we had that here too. We were like, oh, we can't do that, because.
No, I mean, why?
I didn't, I didn't do that. Things are all about. Line off the driveway. Was he, did somebody get that to you, or?
The cabins. They were acting like, or muggles and cabins, they're not. They let us.
I'm just warning.
They just let the village use them. They give, uh, give back things.
So. Pedal, only just, true value.
I don't need all.
I just don't want it to, to get somewhere with, gonna end.
I don't need, it's weird, he leases the building.
You know, and you realize how it's going on.
Just like.
It's hard to plan that.
I think Nick leases. I don't think he's a player. I don't think he's, he might be a player. But it's a weird situation.
I know, I know. I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But being that, I think this is gonna be.
Oh, weird.
In the hardware store, they're breeding house.
Yes, now, yes. Was there a? Right, right.
Yeah.
Like, except that it was just cement.
Yeah.
So is he paying rent to have that there?
I don't think that's what matters.
I don't know why it took, I don't know why it was there.
During the process.
And like.
Last time they did, tried to sell it, like that little odd stuff, sell that. The little trouble, yeah. They square ours up.
They didn't block them, because why is it?
Just like. The village owns Lady Girl. Yeah.
Anyway, I would say, I don't think that.
We don't watch Lady Girls at the bar. You. That means we own Lady Girl and everything else.
I don't remember. I don't remember.
Cause I'm probably only, only. Promise. You don't have any. Hundred years ago?
Yeah.
Nobody followed anything, no.
Everything was done.
Nobody cared, that's like.
Diane, I was telling Diane. We don't have access to, to, uh. My deed says we have access to the parking lot, cause years ago, there was a road that went through there. The road went up alongside railroad tracks all the way up to Eastern House. So there, I don't know if, I, I gotta talk to her, to Heather, to see if her deed, if there's a right way going up that way.
I know, that makes it worse, but definitely can't.
Town, town, I know you.
Because she's telling me my house is landlocked. I said, no. My house is landlocked. I have A and B. My driveway deed is shared with A and B. And I said, it goes into railroad property.
It's like you just wash the posture like.
But your house, your back of your house is technically the front of your house.
I know. I already had that argument, cause I wanted to put a pool up, and they wouldn't let me put it in my backyard, because they say it's in front of my house.
Technically, it's like the other house next to you, so.
It was the last mayor. Wanted to pass the way.
Is this different than the one that you showed me?
He's the one being, you know, talking about. My house was there before two eleven was there. How do you say it's my brother? Well, that's your man. I said, yeah, now. Before. I said, do you think the pillars would be facing the village? If my front yard was facing two eleven?
That's really nice.
They did all that, the railroad. Everybody was, and railroad was the main source of transportation. It was a hotel. They all faced the railroad. That's what your bike was, the hotel.
Yeah, it was also, uh, well, I did all my history work. I went all the way to Kingston to get it all. Doctor Eva Cook was a civil war doctor.
I don't know what they were. They had those desks, I don't know.
Before the hospital, across the street, or whatever, army.
I forget what they were.
Yeah, yeah.
Across the street. Maybe they were. I remember, I remember they looked like, but I honestly can't remember.
Did you know, did you have any reason, that concrete slab?
Yeah.
Across, not quite near our house, but. Across from.
Down the road.
Move beyond the other side too.
That was the army military hospital.
As part of that. Must be some kinda sign, it's just, I was like, wondering if it's some, something.
We're not giving the numbers to new folks, you know?
I imagine if you find something, cause I found the lint balls from the guns back then. I found. They were all on piece, I found cast iron toys.
Right.
You know?
One of my friends or relatives used to have that cutter back though, when you come to two eleven, and two oh nine, break the front of the old last one. And he used to go out there and find the coins, and buy them. Flatware, he said, every time it heavy raining, of course, I'll call it later. Also, we call it.
I found, I, I found some, I found two silver dollars in my house. I found nickels and dimes, Indian heads and stuff.
Yeah, especially if you start doing eighty dollar a mile later, you're bad.
I found, well, all the yellow walls, I gutted and insulated it and stuff like that. And I found, like I said, I found silver dollars. I found two of them. I found Indian head dime, Indian nickels, lost group balls, I found. Opting multiple. Cause under my tension, I dug that floor all out, and cord raft lab in there. And I put all new, three, the floor rafters in. I did a lot of work on my house, and it still needs a lot of work. Still a house, it's built like eighteen, seventeen, eighty-nine, seventy-eight, and I still haven't found the first team. You know what I'm saying? I, I haven't found who built it. They say Doctor Eva Cook had it built. But I can't find nothing that says that. Doctor Eva Cook came from Massachusetts, after he got out of, uh, school for the, pre, the doctor. Living Easton, which was. One of the Easton girls, was also a nurse and a doctor. They kinda worked together back and forth for a while, and then they did the army hospital across the street.
At one time, this silly cat, like, through this, we're doctors, we're like, the hospital.
Doctor Eva Cook's pharmacy was, cause he had a pharmacy in the building. And they can't find us there, that far back, cause Doctor Eva Cook, buried there in appearance, graveyard. He's buried there in a son and a daughter.
It ties right up ancient relationship.
It had to be, but I can't.
You were at the old Blue Hotel.
Yeah.
That had a bar, they, they had a few.
And then, and then the one hotel, so how do, the one burned down?
They had a hardwood sort of. I'm just, like, one corner. Wasn't, wasn't trying to do that. Well, maybe I, I mean, I was, sort of, but, but in a legal sense. So a motion to come out of executive session? Can I get a motion to come out of executive session? Eight twenty-nine P. M. Thank you, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, go ahead. All right, and, um, looking for a motion reinstating Robert Capola, um, to the, uh, village of Otisville Fire Department.
Done?
Yeah.
I made that?
Effective, well, effective immediately.
I make that motion, everybody, attorney.
Okay, get a roll call on, uh? Well, how about all in favor? All in favor. Well. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Bob?
Aye.
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 All right, I'll read the full resolution into the record, and sorry.
It's okay.
I appreciate that you waited for me there. I got it. All right, um, this is, uh, I don't know what resolution number it is of twenty twenty-five, so this is subject to. Okay. Uh, whereas the board of trustees of Village Otisville, having suspended Robert Capola on March twelfth, twenty twenty-five in accordance with provisions of section two oh nine dash L of the general municipal, general municipal law, section eight dash eight zero four of the New York State Village Law, uh, and whereas an investigation into the allegations were conducted by lines of private investigators, and whereas said investigation was completed.
And a report was provided to the board and counsel for the village of Otisville, whereas counsel to the board had conversations with attorney Brad Pinsky, counsel for the village of Otisville Fire Company. Regarding a resolution, whereas Pinsky advised counsel to the board that a plea of no contest and time served would be an acceptable resolution, and whereas after consulting with said counsel. Uh, with Rory Brady, said counsel, the board wishes to discontinue prosecution and allow Robert Coppola to return as a member of the village of Otisville Fire Department effective immediately. Now therefore it be resolved, hereby be resolved that the board accepts the plea of no contest and time served, and that is further resolved that Robert Coppola, Coppola. So, may attorney, I got almost all of them, may return as a member of the village of Otisville Fire Department immediately. Okay.
You authorize to sign that. I will provide the printed copy to Christine for your signature. All right.
And we'll get him a copy and we'll get the company a copy and go from there.
And I think there's a representative, you can certainly pass along the information, all right?
Is there anything I need to, I need to sign?
No. Uh, that being said, um, closing comments. Diane, what do you have?
The only question I had, um, I had someone ask me about the Dragon Boat Festival. And what the parking plan was for the day, and I didn't know that, because at the time that he came here, he didn't have it yet. If we have that at this point, can we put that on our agenda, the review at the workshop?
Hundred percent.
So that if people are asking, I have an answer.
I, I, I have a partial answer, but I don't have a complete answer, because like I said, Presbyterian church is really a piece of it, so whether it be yes or no, um.
Have they been approached?
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, okay, cause it was absolutely the deacons of the church that was.
Oh, I know, I know.
Okay.
A vocal deacon, okay, thank you. Lance, where you at?
I'd like to thank the fire department and D W and all the workers for that bus, um.
Yeah.
Mishap that happened in village and state road, you know, they got there, they got there before I got there, and I was just interested to make sure that. Have a problem with, um, I always said, nothing worse than a lazy police officer. And lazy with them, don't put down the right things that happen, like, if you don't mark down that fire hydrant, then those doesn't get paid. If you don't mark down that ditch, the state doesn't get paid, and then the whole damage of the water flooding happens again, but everyone did a good job and thank everybody. Fire department, D W, and all the county and state workers for the show.
Bob, what do you got?
No closing comments today.
Okay, I just have one, well, I'll, I'll start off this way. Uh, since Javier's not here, and people call here all the time and ask this, I just, uh, I have his business card sitting here, but I just wanna put two phone numbers out, if anyone listens to this entire meeting to the end. Uh, Javier's phone number directly is three eight six eighteen thirty-seven, uh, his cell phone number is eight four five seven four one four six five one. Since he's not here, if anyone has any issues or problems, you can always leave a message on both of them, right, his voicemail. Uh, and or his cell phone, uh, as soon as he can answer him, he will, um, that's normally what we tell people, so since I've had people ask that question, I wanted to just put his phone numbers out there. That being said, um, that's all I got. Eight thirty-four P M, can I get a motion?
But you didn't approve the bills.
Yes, it did.
He was dancing around, but yes, he did.
I didn't, I didn't get it, I, I didn't.
Would you like us to do it again?
No, it's fine, I'll, I've got it, I'm recording.
Listen, I specifically did ask that I missed something on the way in there, but.
And I said you didn't approve the bills for the.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say that. I, I did read it.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it somehow, well, I'll definitely record it.
Okay, that being said, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting at? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You're good one, I remember, you're good, here, let's look this way. You're good.